Lots of our Dana Santana.
Present.
Barbara Harrington McKinney. Carolyn McAndrews.
Present.
Christopher McAhill.
Here.
Eric Paulson. Grant Foster. Keith Furman. Thomas Wilson.
Present. Barbara, do you have a quorum? Go ahead, Tom?
Yes, Randy Udell's appointment is being voted on tomorrow at council. However, he is allowed 90 days to continue to serve after his expiration date, which is, I think, October 1st. So I believe he's able to be counted towards the quorum of this meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am having problems with my visual. I am counted as present, but I'm not able to turn on my video for some reason.
Okay, thank you. Then if you do end up having to step away, please let us know audibly. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, one more clarification. Bodri is here and he, his appointment is also being voted on tomorrow at council. However, it's been more than 90 days, I think, since his term expired. So he cannot be counted towards the quorum.
Okay. All right, we're still okay then. All right, thank you. Okay, with those things out of the way, I guess we have to do our virtual meeting opening statements of our tech facility. Do you could please begin with that?
All right. Welcome to our virtual meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking, clicking the link or calling the number in your original email to members and city, city staff. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions. Staff, click raise hand when you're asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which their hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public that have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed in today's agenda. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Jesse. Approval of minutes from our September 19th, 2022 meeting. Assuming all board members without a chance to review those, if they so chose, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Chris. Is there a second? Thank you, Carolyn. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of them say for approving our minutes from the September 19th, 2022 meeting, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Chair, please, unanimous. If you'd like to register, a no vote, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it will go down as unanimous. Thank you. I do not believe we have any registrations for public comment for items not on the agenda. Has that changed? Sharon?
That is correct. No registrations.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications, disclosures, or recusals from members of the board? Seeing none, our first agenda item for the evening then is Legis Ar seven, three, six, four, eight. Planning and Vision Staff Update on the Hawthorne TruX Neighborhood Plan.
Hello, everybody. It's good to see everybody again. My name's Dan McCullough, and I am one of the project leads on the Hawthorne TruX Neighborhood Plan. And we are doing our mid-project check-in with the BCCs that we are likely to see. You are the second of several. Can everybody see the presentation? All right, great. So I will jump through this. A little bit of background and an agenda, just first kind of where we're talking about the area largely bound by Highway 30 to the south, the kind of airport and the Bridges Golf Course to the north, to the west, north end, kind of the airport and Plymouth Park, and the east, Rindal, kind of continuing down Mendota to the rail corridor. I'll talk a little bit about the background, what we've heard in our first two rounds of engagement, first being issues and opportunities, and then kind of feedback on our draft recommendations and concepts, and then kind of going our next steps through the process. So reasons to plan, you know, we do like to keep our neighborhood plans up to date. The last plan in the area was about 20 years old and had kind of 30-year-old data. And a lot of it was talking about some of the housing. I found this really interesting. We took the housing data in that Hawthorne, or the Carpenter-Ridgeway-Sycamore-TruX Neighborhood Plan. We also are attempting to shorten the name of this plan. When we adjusted that for inflation, those median housing values and rents, that would translate into $125,000 for a house in today's dollars and $875 per month in rents in today's dollars. Obviously, we are very, very far off that, and that speaks to the housing pressures and the growth that we're seeing in the, in the, in our community, which is leading to rapid price rises in housing. If you guys may recall, our growth projections from Imagine Madison, the Comprehensive Plan, anticipated 70,000 new residents between 2015 and 2040. We're actually growing about 50% faster than that initial projections. So we know that housing is can continue to be a significant issue in the area. There's a couple of the major things in the area. We do know that the Highway 51 study is coming up. Actually, the first PIM Public Information Meeting is Thursday. We don't know what the design is going to be, but we do know that it has potential to change the areas significantly. We also have a new transportation or transit network, as well as some other issues in the area. The F-35s are coming relatively soon. We do know that many in the area are concerned about that. So in our first phase, again, I mentioned that's pretty much, it was issues and opportunities. We did some online engagement and interactive commenting map. We prepared a map and data book to really kind of explain some of the issues to the community. We did some webinars. We did a series of the in-person and virtual meetings. We also did a walking audit, as you can kind of see in that top image, with some of the, also the staff and the PTA from Hawthorne School. Some major themes, of course, housing is certainly the biggest, the first one that we heard. Concerns about maintaining the affordability, what that balance of affordability and market rate should be on future developments, making sure that scale is right, too, taking advantage of opportunities where they present themselves, but also kind of making sure, kind of maintaining the, the character of this, the intact, kind of the depth into the neighborhood. There's a lot of excitement about some of the redevelopment opportunities. You kind of see those houses in the middle picture. Those are in East Washington. They were no longer there, but they had stood in that condition for quite a while. People are excited to see what is new and could happen in the area. We did hear a lot of traffic and pedestrian conflicts, better crossings, more crosswalks, more sidewalks. A lot of this area was developed outside the town, so we have a lot of rural cross-sections. Some, some desire to see some more signals and speed controls, although that's not particularly unique to this section of East Washington. Racing was mentioned as an issue that, that has occurred in the neighborhood as well. One thing that also kept coming up is zoo. We kind of characterize this as no there, you know, there was no neighborhood institutions that really brought people together, whether it be a restaurant or a cafe. There can, not really any gathering spaces. The parks are kind of developed in kind of the, I would say Madison's kind of older style, where they be wrapped in developments. While that did produce some cost efficiencies in the beginning, I think it leads us to a lot of open spaces that is underutilized and not well seen. And just, you know, people being in the park attracts people to the park. There's a lot of barriers, both created and natural, whether they be the hills, is a very, well, for, for being a relatively traditional, you know, block and block pattern of the city, it is disconnected by some of the street patterns. So I think Ridgway Avenue is actually exists in three separate segments, one in Carpenter, one between, I guess, as Fair Oaks and one 51, and another one on the other side of 51. It's just kind of indicative of how the area has grown kind of in patterns and kind of bubbles over time. Childcare and community services were certainly also one that we heard a community need for as well. So I'm just going to hop into our recommendations. Our land use recommendations really had three themes around those, really focusing higher intensity land use categories around the BRT stations, incorporation of greater missing middle and shift to a greater mix of housing categories, particularly by shifting some of our low residential districts into a low medium to allow for more units like townhomes, duplexes, small multifamily as well. And then a shift to, from commercial to a mixed-use category, and that did kind of change some thinking a little bit. A lot of the areas are, I can actually shift to the next slide and kind of see some of these differences. Our commercial land use designation is pretty clear that it's really intended for commercial retail services and, but it's really not inherently appropriate for residential. Shifting to mixed-use categories would allow those retail uses to maintain, kind of be consistent with the adopted plan, but also allow for residential. We also took the approach in this plan that a mix of use or a mixed-use category should not mean that every building needs to be a mixed-use building, but it should allow for a mixture of uses, more similar to a downtown. And where we, where we thought that it was important to have those ground floor uses be active, those kind of commercial ground floors, we identified that with an active ground floor designation. And those are really focused primarily, again, around those BRT stations. Couple of things that that, what that might look like if we kind of go through this. This is the Highway 30 off-ramp on East Washington. One of the things that we're looking at here is a possibility to vacate the frontage road between that off-ramp and then over by, I guess that's Reske. Bring that development, the redevelopment that could occur up to East Wash, because otherwise, if it were to occur, you're still, as a pedestrian or cyclist, you're still kind of, kind of in this middle, this floating area. We have a street on both sides for you and nothing's actually accessible without crossing a street. This is at the intersection of Fair Oaks and East Wash. This is the current, the Beembo proposal that was recently adopted. A couple of other, you know, properties over here, it kind of creates some gateway conditions. But also starting to look at how could we open up the Hawthorne open space, which is really the kind of most central in the community. We're putting the fourth, or we're maintaining the recommendation from the previous plan that the city should work to acquire those properties on Lexington for incorporation into that open space. It is kind of a combination school, as well as it's, it's kind of a city park as well. Yeah, it is a designated open space. We have a working relationship with that, that school in our parks division. And as we transition more to the Highway 51 corridor, looking at how we can, we can link some of these neighborhoods together. Extension of Schneideman across Highway 51 through kind of the commercial area. This is where the, the, one of the auto parts store is a restaurant here, and linking it up through into the kind of TruX area. This triangle here is owned by Dane County, and they're exploring a workforce housing project there. So just, again, trying to take our opportunities where we see them to link communities together by enhancing connections. We're also exploring a new local streets between East Wash and Mendota Street. If you look at some of the alternatives for Highway 51 that DOT put forward in 2014, a lot of those lost local access, and their solution to kind of basically allowing those properties to redevelop was to put in a cul-de-sac that actually took up most of the developable space. I think we could do it in a, in a way that provides better local access with that connected local streets. So we're not just kind of going, you know, from East Washington, you're not going down Mendota, then turning down to a cul-de-sac, kind of basically get back to where you started. Our transportation recommendations are really, again, we have some major focuses, supporting BRT. A lot of that is done through some of the land use recommendations we mentioned before. Because we know the Highway 51 study is going to be ongoing, we're recommending a series of goals and kind of outcomes rather than specific techniques, sidewalk and pedestrian improvements, and those new reconstructed streets. So as I mentioned before, support BRT really through that, that land use, that highest intensity near stations. We want to make sure that those stations have good pedestrian access. We heard a couple of comments about improving access to the station at Fair Oaks by kind of removing some of those right, those flying right turns, and then having those active ground floors to support the needs of transit riders, whether it be just getting a cup of coffee, you know, possibly having childcare, you know, the ability to drop our children off on, you know, if you're on BRT, you drop kids off, get right back on the BRT. It's huge time-saving, or something like a local grocery store as well, a small grocery. So High Street with 51, as I mentioned, our, our approach at this point is to kind of goals for the reconstruction. We are, we are working very closely with the city's Department of Transportation on exploring alternatives, as well as state DOT. But so far, we're always really making sure that the alternative is as comfortable for bikes and pedestrians as well. Right now, as you can kind of see in that top image, you have to cross nine lanes of traffic to get from one side of the road to the other. That's quite a bit. I actually crossed this myself unexpectedly as a pedestrian in the last fall. It's a lot. It really is. It's, it's, it's not something that you can do quickly, particularly if your mobility impaired. It, it could be very, certainly wouldn't be comfortable experience. Making sure that whatever happens, that that intersection is human scale, you know, if there is a grade separation, we want to make sure that that's happening below grade and maintaining that visual connection. So East Wash, our, our neighborhoods on east side of 51 on East Washington are visually separated from each other. I think they could do within the current footprint, as you can kind of see the alternative. It's shown on the screen. It's from 2014. All those red Xs are buildings that would need to be demolished. There's quite a few. There's quite a bit of a right-of-way currently. So this is kind of understanding kind of the alternatives, and again, moving forward is something that works really for the city and the residents around there. Still take continued use or redevelopment adjacent properties. We understand that probably there, there may be some demolition that is required, but making sure that the, what's left can be redeveloped in a way that has a positive impact on our community and not something like this is that cul-de-sac I was mentioning here. The cul-de-sac basically takes up the entire developability of the site. There's very little leftover that is actually usable. And maintain our local street connections. So this is MacArthur. We're losing that. We think could have serious consequences for the neighborhood as well. Roland Avenue is also one that they are showing that might lose its connectivity in this current condition or with this alternative that's shown. So with sidewalks, we, we do see a priority need on Lexington and Mendota Streets. So Lexington connects the, the neighborhood to the commercial area on the other side of 51 and Walmart. Lot of residents use that for their grocery source and having, and really, there's no pedestrian infrastructure at all. Crossing that at, at Lexington is also very challenging as well. We also know with the BRT station and the permanent men's shelter, having that connect a sidewalk on Mendota Street is certainly very important. Also, just with the extensive rural urban reconstructions coming, you know, these aren't in the tip yet, but we do know they will happen. And our recommendation that is, we've heard widely supported, at least in the neighborhood, is to have sidewalks on all streets. We've heard of that from a lot of parents and people at the school, that they are very strongly needed and just really a basic infrastructure feature for the city. One of the, one of the things that we kind of saw in that walking audit was kind of taking a look at Fair Oaks Avenue and kind of what it is and what it does, and is it working with the adjacent land use? How can, how can it be done differently? Because it is quite a bit. It's 44 feet of pavement for 7,000 cars per day. So we have the drive lanes. We have bike lanes. We have parking lanes on each side with single-family on each side. They're generating very little demand. And the end result of that is terraces so narrow that our forestry division won't plant trees, street trees on Fair Oaks Avenue. So we explored just a couple of concepts, some near-term and long-term solutions, what we could do. Again, this construction isn't scheduled. This isn't in the tip, but we are kind of looking at the infrastructure in terms of the curves, in terms of utilities underneath the street, kind of, you know, it may happen during the phase or the life of the plan, but also get just people are thinking about what could happen. So we're looking at a couple of alternatives, one which moves the, the bike lanes off the street into a shared-use path that would take advantage, on the east side of Fair Oaks, which would take advantage of the existing tunnel underneath East Washington, and a kind of more traditional on-street lanes, but with, with kind of tightening the lanes and moving parking to one side. That does kind of certainly help us get much larger terraces for, for a higher quality urban canopy, as well as possibly doing some distributed green, distributed green infrastructure and stormwater management where appropriate. The balance of the, the recommendations certainly are, are relevant, that certainly maybe of less importance to TPBB, but just looking at for, for remaining complaint categories, neighborhood housing, of course, we want to encourage affordable housing, using the city's Affordable Housing Fund, also support Dane County with their property as well. We want to make sure that residents are aware of the Part 150 soundproofing study program that is going on. That is the noise mitigation related to the F-35s that is ongoing right now. They are in the process of remodeling the contours based on updated assumptions, and hopefully those contours will be out in November. It's a little longer than that, getting the soundproofing going, but it is in process. We also want to make sure that people are aware of the existing city programs to help people maintain, stay in their home or make updates as needed. Want to make sure that with the economy and opportunity, explore creating a new business improvement district or business association for the businesses on East Washington. Explore also how it can help small and emerging businesses through possibly a rental assistance or guarantee program. One thing that we do know is that when strip malls get torn down and replaced with mixed-use buildings with commercial ground floor, there is a significant increase in commercial rent on price. So what can we do as a, as a community to help those businesses stay in the neighborhood? Employ, explore, employ and support childcare or other ways we can support affordable childcare in the area. And a partner with, Explore City Partner to identify and promote youth job opportunities along BRT corridor. Access these jobs is certainly something to be also heard in the area. Culture and character, make sure that we're using the inclusive process when we design either our parks or other community spaces. Encourage new neighborhood events. You know, one thing that the neighborhood talked about quite a bit is if you look at some of the other small east side festivals, you know, something like an Ekin Park Fest or Fed or, you know, Horton Park Fest, something like that, this neighborhood is kind of the last things east side neighborhoods that doesn't really have their own kind of festival or something, or even a street festival, that could be something to look at. And just make sure that we're continuing with our city art policies to enhance the, the character and appearance of that areas. With our Green and Resilient, we mentioned, again, thinking about those canopy, those terrace widths to support not only large canopy trees, but also rain gardens where appropriate. There is some flooding that we do need to address at Lexington and Highway 51 that is a major access point for the neighborhood and can get shut off in, in severe rain. Weather events, partner with Dane County and improve access to Starkway and Creek area for recreation and just walking through the, and improve the care, the environmental quality of the area as well. There's a lot of community buildings and partnerships. I'm not going to read through all these individually, but just thinking about how we as a, as a city can work more collaboratively with the neighborhood and those, those partners that are already there, thinking about things that we can do as a city in terms of near-term actions as, as well as what actions that we can help support, but a really responsibility of our neighborhood partners, because they're outside the scope of what that we can provide as a city. General feedback, so we, as I mentioned, we've, we've tried to keep a pretty diverse set of engagement opportunities. We had a couple of virtual meetings. We met with the PTA. We had a day at Hawthorne Elementary. We went to the splash pad at Rindall. We had a lot of support for the Jack draft in general. There was enthusiasm for new growth. There's a couple of things that, that on the more programming side that we need to, to include, programming for kids of all ages. There are some safety use, some drug use things that, that, that we certainly can incorporate and address through recommendations. But generally, we're, is, is very well received. So our next steps, again, I mentioned, we're in the middle of our BCC mid-project updates. We have a couple left with CDA and CDBG, but a remaining, we have a couple other, other community events going on. But we are intending to move into Phase Three beginning in mid-November, likely the week before Thanksgiving. There, we intend to have our draft plan text, as well as start soliciting ideas for CDBG expenditures that we have with this program, and our intent is to introduce a plan more formally for adoption in January. So that's what I have at this point. I'm happy to take feedback or answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Dan. Feedback or questions? Alder Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Dan. Could you pull up the transportation map slide that you had?
Sure, a second.
Great. So I don't know, I'm guessing in the final version, there might be some more information around potential bike network improvements. It looks like on this one, I, I see the potential multi-use path connection between Mendota and Lexington, which is great. Obviously, some of the street connects, street connections would help with that as well, and then the head-bike intersection improvements in yellow, as well as the Fair Oaks concepts that you shared. I'll just, I guess, share a couple of other things to maybe look into, and hopefully we can have a little bit more kind of clear map around the, the current and proposed bike network. So I guess one thing that is helpful is just to, like, on this map, you can even really see the Starkweather path coming up under Highway 30 and coming up into the neighborhood, which is just a, obviously, a really critical network. We've been just thinking about, you know, lightweight improvements along there to, to really highlight that. The, when you were looking at the maybe potential enhancements around Hawthorne school slash park, you know, that's one area now where it's actually a really valuable and important bike connection, but it's also very awkward, because you're kind of just, you have to sort of, you really have to know what you're doing, and it feels like you're almost trespassing going into the school's parking lot, et cetera. So I don't know if it's part of that work, you know, once, you know, if, if any of that land is acquired, or if there's any opportunities to make improvements now, but just sort of highlighting and improving the connections through that, that part would be something, I think, to show on here.
Sure.
Oh, go ahead.
So the reason why this map doesn't show a lot of, of bike connectivity is because when we looked at the, let me share something different, like, when we looked at our, so this is a page from our map and data book about those kind of routes that are in and around. That are in and around, and so there there is quite a bit. Um of on-street and off-street lanes, and so we, again, kind of seeing the the opportunity for that connection between. Um Lexington and Mendota, you know, certainly a very valuable one. Uh but we could certainly put a a map in the in the final version and we intend to just kind of more that that bite network elements of it. As well.
Yeah, I think I think it would be great, and even on this one that you just pulled up, I mean, I think that's that's good as well, um like if if you zoomed in a bit. Um, you know, especially around like Highway Thirty um area there. So you can see where the, you know, you've got the current green and then the the dash green kind of future, like where that stubs out there, there's no indic- like. Obviously, the if you're biking, you're not just going to stop there, and so like. Going north on Mayfair is essentially a bike route, um and it and it's, you know, pretty low traffic, et cetera, but it's not really. I don't even know if it's marked at all, it doesn't really, it's not obvious that it is, and um like how you get from that point. Let's say up to East Madison Community Center, um you know, Truax area or beyond. It's just not obvious, so you, I mean, I, some of this stuff I think can be, could be accomplished even with signage and just more like intentional bike routing. Um stuff, some of these low low-stress streets, it's not going to require a lot of um big investments, I don't think, but I I think it would be great to just. Think a little bit about that because it is an area where it's just, it is really broken up, particularly by Highway Thirty and Highway Fifty-One in East Wash, and so it's. For for something that's so centrally located and and seemingly connected, it it feels really disconnected um trying to bike through there, so. I think just, you know, maybe working with with some TE staff and looking at that, um. I think there's some good opportunities, uh I would say on the Fair Oaks um. Kind of potential alternatives that you shared, um I I thought the first one looked really good. Um I think maybe considering with that second alternative. Um, you know, I really like in our plans to try and. Um, not shoot for the moon, but um, you know, really sort of push ourselves, be a little bit more aspirational, I guess, and so. Um, you know, with the volumes that Fair Oaks carries, uh you know, I I think that really calls, if we're going to have any on-street. Bike lanes, I think it really calls for buffered bike lanes, so I would I would really um consider showing that second alternative, that concept two. Um, it's just really too tight, the way that is, you know, fourteen foot for a parked car and and bike lane is a, that's a door long. Door zone bike lane, you know, and four foot on the other side when you take the curbs out, so. Um I would, I would say if you're going to show an on-street version, we should maybe show it without on-street parking at all, which I understand, you know. Has has impacts, um but I think if we're really going to be having a conversation between one of these two. It would make sense to have something like the first concept and then a maybe a modified concept two. Where it's buffered bike lanes and no on-street parking, uh because that seems like maybe the better. Alternatives to to weigh back and forth, um I would also. Be interested, I I think you also consider extending whatever concept ends up getting adopted for Fair Oaks. Um up through Wright Street as well, um you know, the tunnel takes it there and then to have that transition onto the. On-street lanes onto Wright doesn't really make sense, so I think, you know, if if we're going to have a shared use path, for example, on Fair Oaks. It'd be great to potentially see a recommendation in here to continue that up into the future, um upright all the way to Anderson, where we also have shared use paths, et cetera. Um so that would be something that I I think would be worth talking through and maybe um considering here.
It's just to clarify, our intent with the concepts wasn't to come to a determination of what the exact outcome is. Um because we don't, you know, we are pretty far from a construction, we don't actually know when it is. Um but we just want to kind of show residents some potential ways that the space could be better utilized. Um but we could certainly, you know, put in another alternative with buffers and some other things, but yeah, I would agree. You know, if these, if an off-street path happens, taking it up on Wright, there certainly is a space up there. Um we'll be able to do that without much challenge.
Yeah, no, and I understand these are, you know, pretty high level conceptual in terms of the 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 planning document. It, I think they really, it is a time when people really do pay attention though and gets their imagination going, um so I just think particularly in that. Case and that situation, you know, we, when we're talking about complete streets, um you know, creating a new. Cross-section where we know that we're creating a scenario where a um. Probably majority of people riding bikes wouldn't feel comfortable using Concept Two. I don't really think we should be putting it in a planning document as, uh you know. A a realistic alternative, to be frank, I mean, if if we're going to be, if we're talking about a complete reconstruct, I think we should. We should show concepts that really meet, um you know, what we're trying to do around complete streets, so. Um appreciate you taking the feedback.
Thank you.
All right, Chris, you're up next, go ahead, please.
Thanks, um so I like a lot of where this is headed, especially um the land use stuff. Um it's definitely with Route Fifty-One coming up, to the extent that we can. Take a a hard stand on what that ought to look like will be very important. I get my one concern is the same concern I have with all of these neighborhood plans, which is that the devil's in the details on the design stuff. Um, like, I've been watching the Union Corners last phase go up, which is, you know, just a little bit closer to downtown on East Wash. And it checks a lot of the boxes, you know, it's dense, mixed-use, activated ground floor, it's technically walkable. But like it doesn't invite wadding, walking, and it's that's, it's just, that's comes down to design, like, we got these big. Buildings with a parking lot nearby versus like really nice clusters of of. Density, you know, like the good old fashioned urbanism, um. And so I don't know, I don't know where that happens in the process, like I don't know if that can be pushed in the neighborhood plan or if it has to happen at Urban Design Commission at some point, and. I don't know that it's happening there, so it just feels like we keep missing the mark on on, you know, designing what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I I'm very familiar with the um. The Union Corners, uh you know, I I actually reside very close to there, um and. I've been picking up the bus many times in the vicinity there. You know, I I think. Certainly, yes, the we've tended to see buildings get bigger over time with our, you know, just seeking efficiencies in construction. I think it's hard at this point to to, you know, until those spaces are occupied, to make a kind of final judgment on are they. Creating a walkability, um. I I certainly think that, you know, what people, I think, are one of the things that really create walkability, and maybe this is just me editorializing, but. You know, as I mentioned, if people attract people, if you have a cafe. On the street edge, right, people want to be there, that's why we see our programs like Streeter would be very successful. Our cafes can be very successful, because people see the other people there, they want to be there. So i- in this process, yeah, we we don't have a a ton of details related to that. Because we also don't, we're we're concerned about going down the road, about being so prescriptive. That we're limiting options in the future, so. Um we do have on the on the design side, this is within an urban design district, there are some building design standards in our zoning code. And we certainly rely on our uh public review process, as we've seen. Kind of going on to certainly improve the 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 appearance of those buildings as well.
Yeah, I don't know what the solution is, I mean, like, I'm not an architect, but like I know there's like certain understandings about massing and. You know, how blocks work well, so to the extent that we can like provide some guidance on that kind of stuff, I. It would be helpful, I think, I don't know.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, any further questions or feedback? All right, seeing none, thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too. Our next agenda item is Legistar Seven Four Zero Six Seven, Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan Update.
Great, thank you, uh my name is Jeff Gregor, I'm with the Planning Division, um hopefully you're all seeing the Shadywood. Uh slide on your screen.
Looks good, Jeff.
All right, thanks, uh so similar vote to what Dan did, um we're at the stage of the Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan. Uh where we're seeking some feedback from a a couple of BCCs. Tonight, we're with you folks and uh on the twenty-fourth of uh October, we're at Plan Commission. Uh after we get that feedback, uh we will be uh wrapping up the draft plan and heading towards um. Doing our uh final draft and and going for adoption. So just a little bit of background uh on the Shadywood uh Neighborhood Development Plan. It's approximately four hundred and twenty-five acres on the city's far southwest side, a university ridge golf course here. Along Woods Road and Highway PD for reference, Midtown Road along the north. Um the Ice Age Trail is planned to to run kind of through the middle portion of the neighborhood. Uh and uh this area is in both Madison Metropolitan School District and Verona School District. Uh with all of our neighborhood development plans, where the plans are addressing land uses, transportation. Both uh street, uh vehicular, um pedestrian, bicycle, as well as uh transit. Uh we're looking at parks, uh stormwater management. Public utilities and services and uh sustainability as well. Uh in nineteen eighty, uh Congress authorized the National Scenic uh Trail. And then in uh nineteen eighty-seven, the DNR adopted the this corridor shown in the light green. Uh and in nineteen ninety, Dane County also adopted that corridor um into their planning efforts. The city, uh along with partners, Dane County and City of Verona have been. A- and the Ice Age Trail Alliance have been um preserving some land already, that's the land in the darker green. Uh this box in the middle here uh was donated to the city. Uh the city, along with Dane County, purchased uh this forty-acre property here along Woods Road, and then. Most recently, uh Dane County, City of Madison, City of Verona. Uh purchased the land um just south of uh the city-owned property. This other dark green box is owned by the Ice Age Trail Alliance. And so uh, you know, the Ice Age Trail runs, it is about eleven hundred miles. Um and it follows the farthest southern extent of uh the most recent glacial uh advance. It's one of uh eight national scenic trails within the United States, so the the lighter green color is is. Kind of a general wide corridor, uh as part of this planning effort, we will be um. Narrowing it down somewhat, kind of pinpointing where where the corridor should be, and we'll see that in uh upcoming map here in a minute. So uh this map is showing our draft land use recommendations. Uh uh a certain amount of uh the planning area will be preserved in either Ice Age Trail Corridor. Or stormwater and other open space, and that's denoted by this uh lighter green color. Uh the Ice Age Trail Corridor is kind of outlined in this uh brownish-green color and. Uh kind of runs as my cursor is um tracing. Uh the dash green line is just a conceptual uh alignment of the corridor. Uh for everybody's reference, there is a cave uh out in this area, it's called Richardson's Cave, that's the asterisk, the black asterisk. Uh there's a significant amount of uh floodway, floodplain um. Uh through this area, and that's kind of denoted in this central area where there's an intermittent stream, uh uh pond. Um so there's a lot of area out here that just can't be built on due to uh natural features. Uh the remaining area uh we're showing as housing. Um we're using uh three housing mixes, housing mix one, two, and three. Uh the majority of the housing that's shown uh is housing mix two. Uh with a little bit of housing mix three uh along Woods Road and then. Uh just off of uh Midtown Road adjacent to some potential sports fields within that um. Uh stormwater open space. Um back in two thousand and nine, there was uh an attempt to to do the Shadywood Neighborhood Development Plan. And the only thing that got adopted out of that plan was this forty acres at the corner of Midtown Road. And Woods Road, and it's mostly developed now uh as single-family homes. Um we're building off of that street pattern uh and into um the rest of the area here. Again, um since this is the edge of the city, uh we're not making any more land, um. It was decided to try to develop this area at a little bit higher density than what we normally do. Uh we're only showing a small amount of housing mix one on the far western portion of the study area. That's directly adjacent to uh the Ice Age Trail Corridor. That's meant to kind of minimize the visual impact uh along that corridor. The section does not have a a lot of vegetation, vegetative buffer. To this potential development here, so we're we're trying to minimize the impact, visual impact on the corridor. Uh whereas there's a more vegetative cover here to buffer from uh the areas of. Higher density, uh as well as topography is higher kind of. Near to the path or the corridor, and then it falls off towards uh Midtown Road. So the the other thing that we did with the housing mixes was we increased the minimum density of housing mix one. Uh before, the range was uh basically, you know, one to eight dwelling units per acre. Now the the range is six to twelve dwelling units per acre for housing mix one. And then housing mix two starts at twelve dwelling units and goes up to twenty dwelling units per acre. So we're trying to, again, maximize the number of residents um who can experience and live near. Uh this uh Ice Age Trail Corridor. And and make the the most of of the property or the or the developable land. Uh I mentioned, again, we're showing housing mix three, those would be, you know, apartments. Uh you know, if this was not developed already, those apartments would likely be at the corner of Midtown and Woods Road, however. Uh that's not the case, so um. Woods Road is a transit corridor currently today, uh there's a route that um goes out to Epic. Um that runs during peak times, um so. Feeling was that housing mix three was appropriate for this area of Woods Road. Uh we're trying to develop, not necessarily a park, but we're trying to. Uh use some of the flatland um within the stormwater area. Uh as a dual use, uh and perhaps uh get a couple of uh sports fields out of it. Um felt putting some housing mix three adjacent to those sports fields uh was also appropriate. In that case, uh we're showing uh a couple of um. Different types of paths, uh the purple dash line would be a proposed shared use path, um kind of ring the backside of the neighborhood. Um and it'll become clear, it it also connects into some paths along Midtown and Woods Road. Uh that'll become clear in a minute. Uh where obviously we're showing the conceptual um Ice Age Trail Corridor path in the dash green. And then we're showing uh pedestrian paths that would connect the shared use path uh to the Ice Age Trail uh path. Uh but those are the, those are the uh dash brown lines, those would be pedestrian only, we don't want to um. Uh direct bicycles to the Ice Age Trail, um just pedestrians. Showing a a potential trailhead somewhere in this general vicinity, it's more of a placeholder. Uh that would get located uh at the time of construction of the Ice Age Trail Corridor, it could move north, it could move south. Uh we're just, we're denoting that uh we think Ice Age Trail um corridor trailhead makes sense in this general uh area. Uh moving on to our transportation recommendations regarding pedestrians and bicycles. There currently is a shared use path along the south side of Highway PD. Uh essentially going just a little bit past past Northern Lights Road. The MPO's bike um plan shows a potential trail um kind of. From Shady Oak headed south to PD and then along PD. And then uh we're proposing a shared use path along Woods Road. From PD all the way to Midtown Road, uh that would be um. We we were not, we're not suggesting sidewalk. That would be, we were not, we're not suggesting sidewalks on the golf course side as there's no residential on that side. And then we're, the plan's also proposing a shared-use path from the intersection of Midtown and Woods to the intersection of a north-south Greenway Trail that's proposed to run further north. And so now the trail that kind of rings the backside of development makes a little bit more sense. It connects into the off-street path along Midtown as well as Woods Road, giving you options of, you know, whether you want to bicycle along a road or you want a little bit more leisurely route through the backside of the neighborhood along the Ice Age Trail corridor. We are still kind of ironing out some of these with transportation folks, and I'll get into that a little bit when I talk about the cross-sections. But right now, we're proposing after, to the west of this intersection of the north-south and the east-west, shared-use path. To continue with on-street bicycle facilities as north of Midtown Road, we don't expect a lot of density of development. And there's not a whole lot of density west on the south side of Midtown Road as well as you're headed into the township, so traffic volumes are going to peter out as well. So right now, we're proposing on-street facilities, and then those would go up Meadow Road. And again, we're showing kind of the different levels of paths. We're showing the pedestrian paths, the Ice Age Trail corridor as well. So I mentioned cross-sections. Again, these are still in the draft stage. We're still working with transportation staff, working kind of to make these more compatible with the Complete and Green Streets plan. We feel like Community Connector makes sense for Midtown Road as well as Woods Road. These are still in flux, however. The travel lanes may get narrower. The right-aways may get narrower yet, but we're showing two different cross-sections again for what's going on at Midtown Road for the area from Woods to the north-south Greenway path. Proposing that shared-use path on the south side, a sidewalk, continuing the existing sidewalk to the, to the north-south Greenway path. And then the second cross-section is showing a median at that path crossing, ten-foot median, and then the transition to bike lanes. And then there would be a transition to sidewalk on the south side of Midtown Road to connect the folks who live west of the stormwater Greenway. And then for Woods Road, generally a sixty-six-foot right-away is what we're showing right now. Again, the travel lanes may change in width depending on those conversations with the Complete and Green Street staff. Showing a twelve-foot shared-use path, again, as this is the main, the only pedestrian facility, off-street pedestrian facility, north-south on Woods Road and some fairly generous terraces. And again, I mentioned before, we're not proposing a sidewalk on the side of the golf course as, again, no one lives there. And then at the crossing of where the Ice Age Trail corridor crosses Woods Road, we're proposing an eight-foot median there, given it should just be pedestrian traffic, not bicycle traffic. So thinking we get away with a slightly narrower median there. Currently, we're showing fourteen-foot travel lanes. Again, those may shift a little bit, but the thinking there was Woods Road is a transit corridor. Maybe we need a little bit wider lanes. But again, like I said, we'll discuss that with the transportation folks. But love to hear TPB's input on those cross-sections if you have any. Just to wrap up here before we get to comments and questions. As I mentioned before, we're doing some informational updates to TPBB and Plan Commission. Our initial thoughts are we would then spend some time in November completing the draft text and maps, making any modifications to those. And then introduce the Common Council in late November and then do the BCC meetings, November and December, and potential adoption in early twenty-three. However, the introduction, you know, could be in flux depending on what we decide to do. As far as the cross-sections, if we want to wait until Complete and Green Streets is adopted, this adoption schedule may get pushed back depending on that, so. That's a little bit to be determined. So we are seeking feedback, you know, on definitely the bike and shared-use path network. A input on the street cross-sections for Midtown and Woods Road would also be helpful. I will switch back to probably this map and interested in hearing some feedback or answering any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, you know, we are working diligently on Complete Green Streets, but we have put, you know, planning staff in kind of an awkward situation in that they're working on these neighborhood development plans, you know, over a nine or ten-month period. And so they're, they're shooting for kind of a moving target. And so I, I guess I'm apologizing to planning staff, but I am saying that, you know, soon, I think the plan is about to land in a month or so, and so this period of a little bit of ambiguity will be past us. So I appreciate the patience of the planning staff and just acknowledge that, you know, we're diligent and we'll be there soon. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Tom. I really appreciate you just saying that, and I, that all makes sense to me as well, and I mean, and Jeff, thank you for the presentation. I have, I have a little like specific feedback, but I did want to actually just kind of reinforce that same thing. And Tom, maybe, you know, maybe you and I could even meet and just talk through a little bit more detail, but I think for the ones that are open right now until we have, you know, complete streets adopted, it'd be great. Like honestly, for me, at least for the bike stuff, you know, we can just use the NACTO, you know, All These Abilities Guide, and like that would satisfy me, and that's been like out there for, you know, three years or whatever, like. So anyway, I just think we should at least be shooting for that in these. And like, let's, let's not show a cross-section that we don't really want, right? Like if we were, we're so used to having to do reconstructs where we have all these constraints, and here we get to set right-away. And we get to, we get to say this is what we want, so let's just show separation. There's no reason to put bikes with cars if we, if we're starting from scratch, so. I guess that's just general feedback, and yeah, hopefully when we have complete streets adopted, that's, there's good guidance out there for planning staff. I don't really mean it as criticism. But I think for the, for both of these that are open right now, we've got a great opportunity to just come back and, and put our best foot forward, because every, every project I see come through TC is that, but we're often dealing with really tough, tough stuff. And in these planning documents and in our, in our plating that we're approving in our CSMs, we still have time to update them, even though, you know, I get why we're sort of working off some older standards. So anyway, my specific feedback on this and maybe a question, but I think it would be really helpful and valuable to consider a bicycle connection from what the MPO is showing of that future path coming, yep. And then there's some like cul-de-sac streets there, right? And I don't know the geography or anything about it, but it's, it seems to me, particularly with that other shared-use path coming down from the north in the middle of the map. You know, so if you imagine, right, so if you imagine like from there to the other end of where you were before, and if it's, I mean, I understand and support having, you know, sort of pedestrian-only paths connecting to the Ice Age Trail. But if it's not prohibited for some reason, I would really look to find a paved, you know, shared-use path connection sort of through the middle there somewhere, you know, essentially probably from the end of a cul-de-sac that's, you know, gets you close, and then have, have that be a connection into there, because that solves your problem also instead of just dumping people onto, is that Midtown or whatever that busier road up on top is?
Yeah, so, yeah. We did look at that. There are some challenges bringing stuff up from the south, given topography. The one opportunity we may have is kind of through this area. This is where MMSD is planned to run a sewer interceptor. And depending on what their plans will allow, it may make sense to run a paved path up through here to kind of connect in here. And there is a veridian development south of Shady Oak Lane, kind of in this area. So actually, that's one thing we need to update on our plans is the path, actually, they have it shown kind of coming up through here.
Nice, that's better anyway.
So we'll update our maps to show that. We can dash something in perhaps through here. I guess we were kind of waiting to see what MMSD's plan showed as far as. This area is a kind of a ravine. There's lots of bedrock in there. It's going to be a challenging challenging project to get just the sewer through there, so. But that's probably our best opportunity. We did look at kind of coming up through one of these skinny properties, but the grades were such that we would have to buy the entire property or buy an easement for the entire property to to just be able to grade it. We had engineering look at that, and there's single-family residential currently on those properties, so it would, that would make it difficult to kind of come up through here, but we were looking at that.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great to hear all the, what you've already looked into, and I don't know if like Chris Pedakowski's involved or has taken a look yet.
He was.
Yeah, great. Yeah, I, I think I would, I guess my, my feedback then is let's continue to look at it and put our best, you know, whatever we think the best one is, at least put that on here before we, you know, when we're looking at it. I think it'd be a good and important one. And that's the feedback I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further feedback, questions? All right, seeing you now. Thanks, Jeff, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, then our last item for the evening is Legisstar seven four zero six six, our TPPB twenty twenty-three meeting schedule.
Yeah, I'll share my screen. A version of this was placed into Legisstar today. I apologize. I didn't do it sooner, but I was I was backpacking in the Porcupine Mountains, so it was couldn't, couldn't put it into Legisstar. I was, um, we were informed by Jesse that January ninth. Well, first, let me introduce this whole thing. On this schedule, we have the Board of Public Works, the Finance Committee, the Plan Commission, and the Common Council, as well as the Transportation Commission, which is yet to be determined. In many ways, we have members that interact with all of these committees and/or we interact with them by referrals, right? Technically, one of our members is supposed to be on the Plan Commission. One of our members is on the Finance Committee. Sometimes, some of our, actually, one of our members is also on the Board of Public Works, which is generally on Wednesday, so it's not a conflict. We have two options. One option is to do it once per month. For the first two years of this committee, we've, we kind of went once per month. And then the leadership of the, of the board decided we have so much going on, we should do it twice per month. Option two is shown there and what the schedule would be if we did it twice per month. So it's twelve times versus twenty-four times. Oftentimes, there's a canceled meeting or so, so that when we were doing it twenty-four times a year, it actually ended up being closer to twenty, and when we were, we were doing it once per year, it actually ended up being closer to ten times per year. Jesse helped identify a conflict with IT. Right now, we're a type-one committee, which means that we get IT support, which is actually very helpful for us as staff. Otherwise, we have to learn more Zoom public meeting wizardry to be a type-two, but we can do it, and that's on January ninth. So that this could be modified to, option one could be modified to avoid that conflict by changing the January ninth meeting to January twenty-third. So I guess before the, the board tonight is is to do option one or to do option two, and then perhaps a sub alternative is, um, should January twenty-ninth or could January twenty, January ninth be moved to January twenty-third?
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? I think when we have or had the meetings that were only twelve times a year scheduled, I believe those meetings tended to be a bit longer. So I could be wrong, Tom.
Yeah, I, I, maybe I should put one, I should lay out, I think I did lay out at the last meeting. First, I'm going to just say this board has done a lot. You know, the board has done a lot in the last four years. What would be on deck for this board in twenty twenty-three would be the finalization of Complete Green Streets, right? We will just be initiating the Amtrak Passenger Rail Study. And then perhaps midway through the year, we may be initiating the north-south BRT project planning. The north-south BRT project planning has, I'm going to say, just as much impact as the east-west, you know, as far as the people it touches. However, I will say that much of the route has been established for years, so we may not have the same amount of public discussion as we did regarding State Street and the square and the like. So those are probably the three big rocks that would be accomplished in twenty twenty-three.
Thanks, Tom. Go ahead, Chris.
I guess I'll just throw some thoughts out there. Hopefully, the fact that we went to twice a month was just because it was a busy stretch, and I don't know. Tom, it sounds like maybe you feel like that won't be the case moving forward. In which case, going back to once a month would be great. That said, I think I would personally rather have more frequent short meetings than the ones that go really long. I don't know where that puts us, but I'm thinking.
Thanks, Chris. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, it sounds similar to how I was thinking. My initial thing, my initial instinct when I saw it was, I'd rather just do once. I feel like we could try and, you know, just get our business done once per month. But I do also, so maybe I've got an option three, which is take option two, get rid of all the conflicts for sure. We're not going to try and have those. But then also, and just like basically reserve those dates, but then have as a goal with agenda setting to, you know, whenever possible, if we can and don't need to, cancel meetings, which is, I mean, it's kind of has been how we've been trying to do it, but you know, with sort of an expectation that we won't actually meet on all of those, but I think sometimes the timing is really helpful and important, and so if there's some, if there is something big, if we, if we don't have a meeting date on the books, it's really hard to schedule an extra one. And sometimes that timing is really important when things have to go to other committees and back to council, et cetera. So maybe it's worth reserving some more dates, but at least as vice chair, I would be, you know, willing to really focus on trying to make sure we're not meeting if we can consolidate meetings.
So Alder Foster, look at that option three maybe, Tom, or?
Yeah, so.
Two A maybe, or whatever you want to call it.
Option three, and so if I'm catching you.
Oh, yeah, one, sorry, one more thing, Tom, on that. Yeah, go ahead and take all those red ones. Oh, oh yeah, what? Sorry, one more thing, Tom, on that. Um, yeah, go ahead and take all those red ones off, right? Um. But then I think for that, for that January ninth, I mean, I don't know, if you're confident in waiting, not having a meeting. Um, between December nineteenth, which maybe hopefully we could even cancel, you know, as far as I'm concerned, unless there's something urgent, so maybe not meeting from. December fifth until January thirtieth. If you feel confident with that, then maybe it's fine. Um, but otherwise, I think maybe do in the January ninth. And I know, you know, your staff hasn't done a type-two yet, but it, I mean, and I don't mean to minimize it, but I think. We don't have to have, you know, IT, we don't have to be live broadcast. We could have a, you know, the other, a type-two meeting, I think, if it's helpful.
We, we have done about once a year, we're placed through that challenge and we do a lot of preparation for it, but about. Once per year, we have done it. Uh, we do have January thirtieth and February sixth very close together, so perhaps this could be a January twenty-third. So that would at least place two weeks between them. Does that?
Yeah, I think that's a conflict with Plan Commission.
It is. It would. So you prefer to keep it at January thirtieth?
Well, no, I was thinking the January ninth, um, just putting that, putting that as a placeholder. Um, do, knowing that there's an IT conflict, so doing it as a type-two, right? Supporting it ourselves, not having it on City Channel, whatever, that's fine. And if we don't need it, we can also cancel that one and then. You know, just boot to the January thirtieth. So I, I don't know, or the, actually the February sixth, whatever.
All right, and would we keep the January thirtieth?
I don't think we would need it. If, if we got the January ninth on the books. Then we know, you know, before we cancel that, we know, okay, we're not going to be till February sixth.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then may I ask a question? Uh, we do have this July third, which I just should highlight that, right?
Oh, just cancel that. Take it off of this.
Sounds good.
And anything else, if there's anything else that looks like. More than we want or need that we feel confident pulling off now also. I don't know, there's a lot in like. There's two in September. I don't know. It looks, it looks fine, but I don't really, I haven't looked for like if there's spring break or something obvious for people. Do we have to pass it tonight or could we maybe um. Give folks a little time to look at their calendars and think one more time and then pass it our next one and we want to do it tonight?
Uh, we don't have to pass it tonight or we could uh, pass it. Maybe you could give staff tentative direction in that way, because other, it's kind of a strange thing that all these BCCs are trying to figure out.
Well, sure.
They are. And so we could, we could say this is kind of our tentative and then um. Make us, that way at least the other BCCs know this is kind of one we're, we're planning on meeting and then. Um, you know, it's, it's, everything's marshmallow right now and everyone's trying to figure out where they are.
No, that's, that's great. So I mean, so I'll just say in closing, uh, if anybody sees any dates on that option three that you think would make sense to just pull off. Um, we could do that now as well. I'd be very friendly to any uh, amendments. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder Foster. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Uh, Yom Kippur is the September twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth, but I think that. Ends at sundown on the twenty-fifth, and I guess I'm not quite sure, but it may not be sundown by that time and so we're. Within hours of it being a problem.
Pull it from option three.
I, I do not know when the other, um. Some of the other uh, big holidays that are floating. Um, the, the two uh, Ides and uh, on the Islamic calendars move around every year, so I'm not sure where they are yet.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Um, if we pass this as tentative, perhaps we can have that double check. Um, Sharon, go ahead.
Um, I believe June nineteenth is actually going to be recognized as a holiday. Um, as Juneteenth for City of Madison. So that might need to be removed.
Pull it from.
I know it's a new one.
Thank you for bringing that up. Um, Alder Harrington, can you go ahead, please?
Uh, thank you very much. That was one that I was going to bring up as well. And um, looking at, we are going through the calendar kind of on the fly. Um, and I don't know if this, the, the, it was answered whether we had to make those decisions tonight, but. Um, Alder Foster did recommend that we double-check our calendars. I a- absolutely caught the one for Juneteenth. But I had not had a chance to peruse and find out if there are other um. Uh, conflicts that, that we'd be pushing up against.
Thank you, Alder. Um. Alder Foster, am I, just you made option three as a motion?
I did, yes. Sorry, that's why I've been uh, accepting.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's what I figured. All right, um, I do officially need a second for that. And then it would be a tentative adoption.
I think Alder Paulson has, has a comment.
Go ahead, Alder Paulson.
Uh, no, I just apparently didn't put my hand down, though I will note that it's a pretty long stretch from June fifteenth to July seventeenth. It's a little longer than most of the other ones, so. Or I'm sorry, June, June, June fifth to June, July seventeenth. So I don't know if you want to. Move anything in that way, but it looks like there's a bunch of conflicts there.
We'll have to be mindful as we come to that point with our agenda setting meetings. Um, all right, I do actually need a second for that. Thank you, Randy. A bunch of hands just came up. I saw, I was going to use your hand up from before, Alder Paulson, but all right, Randy gets it. Um, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of adopt, or tentatively adopting option three as our twenty-twenty-three meeting schedule, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
Aye.
McKinney abstains.
Thank you. Oppose, no? All right, seeing that will, that will be our tentative meeting schedule. Go ahead, Tom.
So I think what I'll do is I'll um. I'll put, re-PDF this and put this in Legistar under this agenda item. And I'll just say tentatively adopted so that it's available to everyone.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, that's all we have for the evening. Motion to adjourn, please. Thank you, Chris. Second. Alder Foster, I think you got it by hand. Show of hand. All those in favor of adjourned meeting for evening, please unmute yourselves and say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Should we, yeah, I'm us for adjourn? Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.